So, no. Hey, everybody, can you hear me okay? So, folks, it's 6:01. We generally start our meetings right at 6 o'clock. We're waiting for one commissioner who is on his way, and as soon as that gentleman arrives, we'll be able to start. So, appreciate everybody being here, and stay tuned. We'll get started here as soon as we possibly can, okay? Thank you. All right, good evening. Can I have everybody's attention, please? All right. Let me hold it for a second there, thank you. Good evening. The September 25, 2024 regular meeting of the Marietta Planning Commission is called to order. Would the secretary call roll for determination of a quorum, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Harlan.
Here.
Vice Chair Bruman. Commissioner Wojcik. Commissioner Lapaglia.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Let the record reflect all members with the exception of Vice Chair Bruman and Commissioner Wojcik with an excused absence.
Thank you. We will now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Lapaglia, would you please lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please rise if you can. Join us in our pledge. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lapaglia. And audience, we'll now be moving on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Secretary, are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
I'd like to, for my commissioners, call for a motion and a second to approve the agenda, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Harlan.
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 3-0.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comments. At this time, the commission will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business which does not relate to any item listed on the agenda or the consent calendar. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're now moving on to the discussion item. The discussion item being the Marietta Valley Unified School District new public school site. Mr. Steele and Mr. Remia, we have a staff report, please.
Just waiting for staff to load it up here. So, yeah, just before we get started here, so my name is Carl Steele. I'm the city planner. With me here tonight, to my left is Jared Remia, the Deputy Director of the Development Services Department. Tonight, we're here on an item. It's just a discussion item. There is no project in front of the Planning Commission. This was triggered by a notice to the city that we received less than 30 days ago. The notice requires pursuant to state law that we bring the item to the Planning Commission for the Planning Commission's input, and so that's why we're here tonight. But there's no project in front of you. So with that, I'll move on. So, the Marietta Unified School District provided notice to the city, and as noted in the staff report, there's sort of two actions in front of you tonight. Oops, it's not working. There we go. So, first one is, there's a state law in Government Code 65402 that if the school district's looking to acquire a property, they notify the local planning staff, which in this case is the Development Services Department, myself is the representative, and they ask staff for a review of conformity as to whether or not a school is allowed on the site that they're looking at. And that's already been reviewed, and that's in the staff report. All of the residential zones in the city allow for schools. This is a residentially zoned property, so a school is allowed pursuant to the zoning. The second question, which is included in the notice to the city, is Public Resources Code 21151.2, which is that if a school district's looking to acquire a property, then the Planning Commission is to investigate the property and provide recommendations to the school district. So, that is really the action before you tonight as a commission, is to receive public input and provide those recommendations to staff so that staff can provide that to the district. So, I'll just briefly go over the property. So, this is the parcel number. You can see the property outlined here in yellow. It's on the west side of the city at Ivy and Hayes, existing in past uses in the area. You have equestrian uses, residential uses, agricultural uses. There's a large equestrian property just adjacent to the site. The general plan designation is what's called Large Lot Residential. It's for our largest residential lot areas. This whole area, pretty much that you see in the tan color, is Large Lot Residential. And then the zoning is Rural Residential, which is RR. That's an old zone that we carried over from the county days. Much of the city was previously zoned Rural Residential, and this area still is. And this is the zoning map, similar color, as you can see, zoning and general plan are very similar. Almost all the surrounding properties are RR, except for the property to the northeast that's in the downtown specific plan, which is a state residential. You see a little bit more state residential and then single family as it gets into the downtown. So, that's the zoning in the area. And like I said, as noted in the staff report, the question from the state regarding whether or not a school is allowed in a residential zone is already asked and answered in the staff report. It is allowed, so there's no, the city can't change that. Schools are allowed in residential zones. This is an aerial of the site, just for more detail, and we can go back to this if folks need to look at it. I tried to get as close as I could. I know it helps to see the site well. You can see there used to be an old home there that was demolished, and then, you know, Marietta Fire is on them to make sure they continue to clear the property, as you can probably see there, for fire danger. So, it's a 20-acre-plus site. I put some street views in here just to help with the context for the commission as the commission's looking at the site. This is at the corner of Ivy and Hayes. You can see there are no sidewalks there, and we have trees on the property frontage. And then, if we go at the other corner of the property, if you will, all the way down at the end of Ivy, this is what the property looks like. You can see almost nothing on the property, and you see the line of trees there. And then, I did another one down on Hayes. You can see there are also no sidewalks down there, no, relatively little street improvements. We would expect with something like this that obviously there'll be frontage improvements, which I know is a big issue with a lot of our properties in the west side. So, I just want to give a little bit of context on the site and as outlined in the staff report. So, I just want to go back to the code sections, the reason why we're here. We received notice from the school district, and we need to follow up. As noted in 65402, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it says, "The planning agency shall render a report with its conformity to the adopted general plan or part thereof within 40 days after it was submitted to it." So, we received the notice almost 30 days ago, so we're going to be providing notice back to the school district here in the next week on this. But I already summarized that in the staff report. And then, this is the code section related to the notice for the Planning Commission. And as noted in here, it says, "The Planning Commission shall investigate the proposed site and within 30 days after receipt of the notice shall submit to the governing board," which is the planning staff here at the city, "written report of the investigation and its recommendations in acquisition of the site." So, that's why we're having a public hearing, right? We have to do the Planning Commission's business in front of the public. That's why we're here. And then, this is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the commission. The commission can provide that input to staff. So, that's why we're here tonight. So, with that, I'll just talk about next steps. So, the action items and things for us to do tonight would be discuss the property in the context of the Government Code and Public Resources Code. That's why we're here. That's all we can really do. Allow for the school district or the public to provide input at this meeting. We invited the school district to come to provide a presentation. We would request that you, the commission, provide any recommendations to staff at this meeting. Also, this meeting is being recorded, so this meeting itself is a public record, and what folks say is a public record, so we have that moving forward. And then, next steps for Jared Remia and I are to provide a letter to the school district related to the reporting requirements in state law following the meeting. And that is it for me. I will open, sorry, open it up to the commission if you have questions of staff.
Mr. Steele, thank you for the staff report. Mr. Fisher, do you have any questions for staff?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Lapaglia?
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions either. I think you kind of spelled out like the procedure here, although this is good ground level for public to put their input in and for us to kind of get, you know, I guess the Planning Commission's opinion on this potential, you know, use of the property or potential development down the road. But, like you said, this is just merely this Unified School District wanting some information back from us if this is like a good acquisition of a property or not. So, I don't think I have any questions for staff, but I maybe have some questions for the school district if they present later. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple, Mr. Steele. So, again, for today, this is, the only action we're looking at is, is this conformance to the general plan zoning, CEQA, and provide a letter of recommendation, correct?
That's correct. And, you know, we're holding a public meeting, so I'd say planning-related items that the commission hears, that the commission would like to convey to staff, you know, that's, I think, something we want to listen to, the things that we have within our purview. I would like to clarify just one thing, I guess, while we're talking about this. If a school is ever built here, and like I said, there is no project in front of us, the project will not come to the city of Marietta. The project goes to what's called the state architect for review. The city is not involved with the project in any way. There's no processing of a project at the city. It goes through the state. City staff will not be involved with the project at all. This is the only action that we see in state law where they ask staff to provide a response, essentially, related to state law, but the permitting of the school will not go through the city. So, I just wanted to be clear on that. We're just looking for input pursuant to state law here.
Very helpful, thank you. So, as far as the general plan goes, and looking over the staff report, both what you covered and what you provide written, the staff has found and states that this property is zoned for a school with adequate public access and is in conformance with code and general plan, correct?
That's correct. So, we're looking at a site, if I can go back here. I would say the context of that is, we have two public roads here, and we have a site that's zoned residential, right? So, there are sites in the city that wouldn't be good for a school related, if you're thinking about the general plan and zoning. For example, an industrially zoned property or a business park property where schools are not allowed, or a site that didn't have public access, for example. There are parcels out there that have private access, right? So, those are things we look at when it relates to the general plan and zoning. In this case, we have a large property that has a lot of frontage on public roads, and it's, like I said, it's zoned residential, which allows, schools are allowed in every residential zone in the city, so we don't see a conflict there.
Thank you. I know we've had various meetings where folks will appear and question, let's say, a commercial building going, you know, in the lot behind them, right, that's zoned a particular, you know, commercial, let's say, or industrial, right? This particular property is currently zoned Rural Residential. Schools are zoned Civic Institutional. So, as I read through this, is this true? So, for all residential zones in the city, rural, estate, single-family, multifamily, et cetera, there is a possibility that an open site or lot in these areas, if it best serves our residents and has sufficient public access, that this lot or site can be converted to a school and redesigned as Civic Institutional? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. What the city does is, over time, here, I'll go back to, the zoning map will help. Over time, when the school district requires properties, if a school is built on the site, eventually, the city would change it to Civic Institutional because that's the zone we assign to existing school sites. Or, like I mentioned to you previously, I think on other items, we, a number of the churches in the city are zoned Civic Institutional. The city's own properties are zoned Civic Institutional. The one here on this map is, I believe, another public entity, like the Water District property. So, we do that with Water District properties as well, but you can't do that until the school exists there.
Got it.
That's our policy. So, we typically do that when we do a general plan update or like a general plan cleanup type item, and then we would convert it to Civic Institutional. Most of the schools in the city were built on residentially zoned land at the time they were built, and then the city eventually converted them to Civic Institutional later.
Very helpful, thank you. So, this redesignation that we're speaking of going to Civic Institutional, this would not apply to commercial, business, or industrial, as you stated earlier, correct?
No, we don't, wouldn't typically do that there, correct? Unless it was, that would be a different, we'd be talking about something different, but if the city were looking at a property like that for not a school, for a city property, that would be different. But if we're talking about a school, typically, schools wouldn't look at sites like that. I would defer to the school district as to where they look to put schools, but I would assume they look to put them near their, who they serve, which are residents, right, that live in the city, not near other businesses.
Got it. I know for the scope of the Planning Commission's CEQA guidelines is certainly something that we look at with every project that comes across. With this topic tonight being an action and not a project, we're exempt from any CEQA review at this time, correct?
There's no, nothing related to CEQA here in front of you tonight. It's property acquisition. There are properties acquired across the state, probably hundreds of thousands at any given time, that no CEQA documents required for property acquisition. And then, the notice and the consideration of this item by the commission also does not require a CEQA action, so it's exempt, as noted in the staff report.
Got it. CEQA guidelines would be reviewed at a later date if this action becomes a project prior to any development of the site, correct?
That's correct, Chair. If a project ever came about on this site, I would assume there would be a CEQA process with, as I said, the state, with the state architect, and the public process through the state to permit the school would require compliance with CEQA, but that's outside the city's jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. And then, one last thing, as far as notice to the public, right? Generally, a project comes up, and there's a state law process that we follow. Would this be in an action? Did the city notify any of the residents, or would that come from the school district school board?
So, I would say, we didn't have time to notice this the way we would if it was a project. It's not a project, so we're not subject to the noticing requirements in the code. For example, like a newspaper article and mailing notices around the site, that's required if there is a project, but this is not a project. This is just a notice from the school district on acquisition, so it does not require noticing pursuant to our procedures. There was also not time to do that within the timeframe of when we received the letter in order to get this in front of you. There was not time to adequately notice it pursuant to our procedures.
Thank you. Do we know if the school district sent any notice out to the residents?
You can ask the school district about that.
All right. Thank you so much. Commissioners, any further questions for staff?
Nope.
Good, okay. Thank you, Mr. Steele, Mr. Remia. May we have a presentation from the school district, please? You state your name for the record, and welcome.
I'm Garrett Daniel, Deputy Superintendent for the School District. I'm joined here today by Jose Contreras, our Director of Facilities for the district.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. I don't know how this is supposed to roll. Is there a clicker I can do? Looks like I have someone to help me here. Thank you so much. Well, again, thank you so much for the invitation tonight. Carl asked us to come and share a little bit about what moved us to be here and to move in this direction as a school district. And so, I appreciate this opportunity to be able to present to you kind of the why we've engaged in this level of acquisition for the school district, in addition to getting the feedback, as Carl shared, we're hoping to receive. And so, we are here primarily out of response, you know? As you see, the sticks in the ground around the west side. I've been in the school district for, this is starting my 22nd year, and over the past 22 years, the school district's been tightly focused on the east side of town and the growth that exists on the east side of town. However, due to the city-approved buildings that are taking place within the city of Marietta, we have an obligation to find seats for children. And so, as of, and I appreciate the cooperation with the city. The city, I think, over the years, has had a great relationship, and so as we work with the city, we get to peek behind the curtain a little bit about what has been approved by the city. And so, this map shows you, and you can kind of see by the yellow swatches there, the things that have been approved, and you can see primarily, majority of the things that are either in the planning phase or getting ready to open are on the west side of town. And so, while we've been focused on the east side of town, we've had a little bit of a snapback where we have to now focus on the west side. We're going to, we need to be planning for the 6,900 units. We know there's more than that. This map is reflective of May of '23, and so, the 6,900 units that plus is what we have to respond to, so we have readiness for children. And we appreciate the cooperation with the city to be able to give us this insight so we can appropriately plan for the growth inside of Marietta. This slide talks about the residential development enrollment projection impact that the development in the city has, and I apologize, there's an arrow that should be down a little bit. I'll blame that on my, on old eyes. But our tenant's boundaries, as they sit today, hold the schools that are impacted. And you can see, we have some impacts that are quite great, that are, so we have, that first arrow should be on Avaha. I don't know, I think when I sent it over to the city, it changed a little bit, where you can see Avaha. The projected students from the new development, we're going to receive 427 students projected. Currently, that school has about 600, and within a couple of years, you're going to start to see growth. But the overall nine or 10-year projection shows us that we will have upward of 900 students at Avaha Elementary. Another impact school is Marietta L. Marietta L. right now sits at nearly 1,000 students, but with the sticks in the ground that are here right now and planned, we will take on another 800 students approximately. In the middle school levels, we have some impacts at Chevalier Middle School and Thompson Middle School. Thompson Medical, Middle School should be receiving nearly 500 students with the planned projects. And so, what I've added on there is just kind of the methodology of how our demographer plans for the averages that we've seen historically here in Marietta that come from either single-family builds or multifamily residents. Next slide, please. This gives you a little bit of the outlook of projection with the development in the city. And so, this shows our elementary projected enrollments, and I tried to color-code this for us so you can see some of the impacts. And so, I know many of us maybe who've been in the city a while are familiar with our oldest school, Marietta L. We just finished a 13-classroom addition at Marietta L., and, you know, to really focus on what we knew in 2018. But even with that new building, we're at near capacity right now. And if you look outward to 2033, '34, we're expected to have over 1,700 kids at Marietta L. if we did nothing. You can see Lisa J. Mills on the other side of town, even though there are some, there is some building taking place out there, they are to grow to 1,100. Coal Canyon, here on the west side, expected to grow to 1,200. Avaha, moving up over 1,000. Antelope Hills, moving close to that 1,000. Antelope, or excuse me, in Altamarietta, moving close to 1,000. On the middle school level, the impacts really that are substantial, all of those Chevaliers moving upward, we started, we believe we were able to do some things at Chevalier to help us accommodate, but Thompson Middle School, for the conversation of the west side, is something that's impacting. We are, we are going through, we've already started a boundary revision project in the district, the hope to help mitigate some of these swells that you're seeing across town, but Warm Springs, you can see, is relatively low. And so, as we begin to try to redistrict or redraw new boundaries, is to be able to shift populations to a different school. Next slide, please. And so, this slide shares with you California school size versus the west side schools. And so, across the state, elementary schools are about average of 585, anywhere from 500 to, you know, 650 is probably that average. Our district average right now is 802, but if you look on the west side, right now, we have over 1,000 at Coal and nearly 1,000 at Marietta L. The projected school size for those, we have nearly 3,000 students at two elementary schools. On the west side of town, we have only two elementary schools, one middle school and one high school. And so, I wanted to share with you, and while we're looking at the number of kiddos that may come from the new developments, it's really going to be the west side schools that are dramatically impacted. While we'll be able to accommodate the students at Marietta Valley High School, I can remember the days when I worked at Marietta Valley High School with 4,300 students. Thankfully, we don't have that problem right now, but we can certainly accommodate the growth that's going, we're going to experience at our high schools. Next slide, please. And so, the land purchase for a future school is something that we needed to consider. And I can tell you upfront, we have no plans right now, we have no money, but we needed to make an investment. We needed to plan for the future. So, tonight, if there's questions about what's this going to look like and, you know, and how big is it going to be, I don't know. Right now, if you can see from the projections, we really need to consider a K8 school. How many students? We don't know. How big, what's the plant going to look like? I don't know. We would certainly engage with the community on that design, but I can tell you, we're nowhere near that process right now. We are just in the land acquisition phase, trying to grab a piece of land. We've looked at a number of pieces of land that were for sale throughout the city to look at, what the prospect of it is. If you've been in the valley for a long time, once upon a time, we had done some CEQA work and some site work investigation up what we thought was going to be a Sykes Elementary School in the Vineyard Project, right? You know, we've been working with the Vineyard, looking at that opportunity. We've looked at it with a number of landholders to look, would it be possible? And with what's available at the time, we really need 20 acres to build a school, and 20 acres is hard to find on the west side, to be honest with you. And so, to accommodate city residential development, we've chosen this site. The parcel is favorable for a boundary. Oftentimes, people say, "Well, can you do things, can you think about this or think about that?" It's really about taking pressures off other schools and being able to draw a boundary that's favorable for, to serve the families of the community. And so, having existing utilities was also favorable, because when you look at a number of things like the Vineyard, there's parcels of land that are very rough, no utilities. In fact, there will be no opportunity for the bridge of Vineyard Parkway to be, from our purview, to be able to be expanded. And so, that was something that we had to consider. And of course, when you can't, if you have the Vineyard Project and you have Thompson Middle School, very close proximity there, very difficult to draw a boundary when you're really have a middle, two middle schools or two eighth grade, seventh, eighth grade institutions, just a couple of blocks away from each other. And so, I think that's the last slide, or is that the last slide, I think? Jose and I will field questions from you, if you have any.
Mr. Daniel, Mr. Contreras, thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, Mr. Fisher, do you have any questions for the school district?
Thank you for your presentation. I understand that you're planning for the future, but you got no money.
We don't.
How are you going to get the money to build the school?
Well, you know how public finance works at the schools. It would either have to be in the way of grants, or it would have to be in a general obligation bond.
And what about the enrollment decreasing over the last couple of years? How does that impact what your study shows for '33, '34, '35?
Well, you can see, so we've had a slow dip inside of our, since COVID, but it's starting to make that comeback. The one area we, when you look at our studies and our, as our outward look, we're always within a 1% to 2% plus or minus accuracy. The experiences we are dealing with right now are primarily is the question mark of the new grade transitional kindergarten. I don't know, if you know, the state has asked us to shoehorn an additional grade into our elementary schools. And so, while I'm not going to be the TK expert, I can tell you, our school sites were not built for an additional grade level. So, that kind of impacts our schools and what they can hold. As we look at the long term, the projections that we're seeing may impact, it doesn't impact us greatly, so I, we don't have intel that we have a dramatic decrease in school enrollment. We start to see interesting things that- We start to see, um, interesting things that happen, uh, in elementary. You can see our numbers, you can, um, our numbers right now, we're expecting over a thousand new elementary kids by twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're not necessarily seeing that decrease that you see. We have a dip a little bit temporarily, but it's expected to rebound starting next year.
What makes you look at this site? Is this site just because of the acreage that's there? Or when you look at it, is it really, uh, a site and surrounding area that would be beneficial for a school?
As I said, the, the partial size is favorable. But I think one of the things that we have to look at is on the west side, where can you put a school that you can draw a boundary? That will service all the west side. Currently, as is, all children on the west side of the freeway will not be able to attend school on the west side of the freeway. We just do not have the capacity right now. Coal Canyon does not have an additional classroom. We have three available at, uh, Marietta L. Something has to happen. And so we need to be able to draw a boundary. We work with, uh, consultants to look at favorable boundaries that could be, uh, for schools. One of the things that we want to work with is make sure it is favorable for students to be able to access. We know, um, there's traffic everywhere. I always say, you know, the sun comes up and comes down every day and just like there's traffic in Marietta. It's a constant. Uh, we know we're not going to be able to avoid that altogether. However, we do believe this is a favorable site just because we, you know, we're, we're going through the due diligence process right now. So we do know, um, from the inspection, it's a favorable property from that area, that, from that side. But if you look at how can you build a boundary in a different place? So we, we can't really go closer over to, say, Copper Canyon, because there's already an elementary school on that side. We need to move it a little bit south, uh, in order for us to get a favorable boundary and this, uh, parcel, uh, fit that bill.
And you need a minimum of twenty acres to build a school?
Yeah. If we're going to, you know, right now, as we look at the numbers, it says today, a K-eight. It could be, it could be an elementary school. But in order for us to be able to have an auditorium, play fields, play space, um, we do need that space. If you look at right now, what we, we, we built upward at Marietta L. And if you look at the land that we have at Marietta L for the size of a school and the same with Coal Canyon, they have very little play space. We would love to be able to take portables off some of these campuses at some point in time.
You know that the main concerns for this particular site by the general public that is surrounding this site is traffic is one. And what it's going to generate with these new school being built, uh, as well as the fact that. Is it the right location for a school? And is this school going to be an elementary school or a middle school?
Like I said, it would be primarily engaged for right now, except if we were to build it tomorrow. Our need is a, a K-eight school. We do not have any other K-eight schools currently in our school district. But there again, that was if we build it today. I don't know what tomorrow is going to hold. So really this property right now is an investment for the school district.
So in my terminology, a K-eight is the same thing as an elementary school?
No.
It is not, okay?
Probably use the, the new words TK. So an elementary school currently takes transitional kindergarten and kindergarten are two grades that are, don't meet compulsory education. So they're not mandatory. Grades one through five are included in an elementary school. Inside of our school district, all of our schools, elementary schools, all eleven of them are TK through fifth grade. When we get to eighth grade, so at our middle schools, it's sixth, seventh and eighth. And so what that would be on a K-eight school or TK eight schools to host on that, on this property. An elementary school, also all the grades in the elementary as well as some middle schoolers as well.
I see. Okay. So it'd be a combination or two different buildings or three different buildings on this site?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any more questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, Miss Lo Paglia.
Yeah. Thanks for coming out and presenting tonight. Um, I, I'm encouraged to, to learn that you've worked at the school, uh, Unified School District for twenty-two years and, and taught at MV prior to that. Seems like you're vested in the area. So sometimes we get folks up here that are not so vested in the area, but happy to hear that you are. I know this side of town very well. Um, I know this area very well. It, um, you know, it may be a twenty acre site, but it, it definitely has, you know, its impact to the, the rural residential area. And it has, you know, I, I think of a lot of problems, um, with this particular property. I drive it often. I drive down, you know, through Old Town Marietta, down Ivy, down Hayes, down Calmia, you know, everything. And there's a, there's a real lack of, um, you know, like, like public right of way curb, sidewalk, gutter, things like that. I mean, gosh, even storm drain, as you can see going down Hayes Street. You know, I think it would be, you know, maybe beyond a monumental task to improve that for safe access for kids walking to school. And, you know, um, let alone the fact that it's basically a, a, you know, a step above a, a two lane country road that's paved. You know, coming down Hayes and coming down Ivy, um, which, which that side of town and, you know, we, we cherish that side of town. It's kind of, I think of it as kind of like Marietta's last frontier. You know, there's often kids riding, you know, I shouldn't say kids, there's often people and kids riding equestrian, riding horses down the street. You know, I'd like to see a better, um, you know, access for, for those, those kind of folks riding down Hayes Street. It's often you see people pushing, um, you know, strollers with babies and them on the street. There's no sidewalk. And I just can't fathom the thought of having thousands of car trips a day to a school. Going down Ivy where there's, you know, there's intermittent sidewalks that, you know, kids would have to walk across dirt patches. And, you know, we're talking like a mile. I looked, I looked on, on Google and from Jefferson where all of these, you know, sticks in the ground, as you said. Are going in, you know, you're talking a mile, one point two miles to get to this destination. And, um, there's a lot of curb and sidewalk and a lot of road improvements that would have to be had. Same thing goes. Personally, I think that it would have to be improved from, from Guava, on Hayes Street, from Guava all the way to Calmia. And, and that you're talking at one point five miles. If, I'm sure you've driven from Guava down Hayes Street, how it has that, you know, steep drop and it bends to the right and left. And often you see a cyclist or people on horses and you come up on them, you know, too fast doing twenty miles an hour. I just can't think about, you know, thousands of trips every day, Monday through Friday, running into that situation. So, you know, just from that standpoint alone, I feel that, and I'm sure you guys have looked at, you know, as many properties as we have available. I just, I personally don't feel that it's a, it's a good location for a, a school, just really based off of.
If everyone, everyone, please hold the applause.
Chair, can we call the room to order?
If everyone can please hold the applause, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, please. Um, no, but you know, I mean, you know, that along with, along with the, along with the rural residential living, you know? You know, that side of town is cherished by everyone in Marietta, you know? People use that often to, you know, to, to explore and, and kind of get out of like, you know, the urban setting that we've kind of come to, you know, live in now. Like, you know, in the last twenty years. And I too, I grew up here. I was, I was basically born and raised here. I'm, I'm thirty-five years old. I've lived here for thirty, you know, thirty-four and a half of those years. And went to Marietta L., uh, went to Thompson, went to MB, went to Tanaha Academy. So I, um, am very much so on this west side of town. I feel that, you know, just purely the location of it, you know, the proximity of it to Old Town. Driving through B Street and A Street and First, Second, Third and Fourth and Fifth and, and New Clay and all that stuff. Like there, you know, I just, there's just going to be cars and people and kids walking and, you know, kids walking from the apartments to school. And I just can't really picture that being something that's like, you know, realistically done without a ton of work. And I, I, I feel like, you know, beyond work that maybe the school district or the state or whoever it is would be willing to do. I wanted to, uh, yeah. I wanted to like offer like my opinion on maybe what a good, good area would be. And, and mind you, I, I drive around in my truck all day for work. I'm around Marietta Temecula like constantly. Have you guys looked at the area off of Jefferson, uh, on both sides of Jefferson between Mirada Hot Springs and Guava? There's a ton of property over off of Madison. I think there's some type of like private school or charter school over there as it is David, David Long or something like that. You know, have you guys explored that area at all? There's a lot of property. I, I do know it's zoned differently. But I feel like the city and the state obviously can, you know, work with that. But have you guys considered that at all?
We've looked at a lot of the properties, um, you know, we've worked with the city. In fact, we're in Escrow right now with a property on Madison, uh, for our preschool. We're, um, um, so aside from that. We've looked at a number of things, uh, on the, uh, on the, on Jefferson that's been brought to our attention. When we were, uh, uh, walking properties with our real estate agent, we were looking at properties. That, uh, were appealing for, uh, grade, uh, you know, environmental impacts. And if you look at like, for example, you bring up Jefferson, are you speaking about the one that sits below grade with the creek running through it off of Jefferson?
There, there's a few of them on, on both the south, excuse me, the, the west and east side. Jefferson, uh, where the old Walmart, you know, property was proposed by, 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 um, um, CarMax and so on, so forth. But yeah, those properties correct that are, that sit below the grade, you said.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with any twenty acre parcels that have good ingress, egress on, on, I guess that would be the east side. On the west side, yes, that was a property that we did look at, but it had substantial issues.
Yeah. Uh, I feel, well, I, I feel that, I feel that Jefferson in itself, I feel like the improvement to Guava that was, you know, gosh, fifteen years ago now, ten years ago now. I feel like those roads were, are improved to, to handle the capacity of, um, you know, of this type of trips that we're going to get. I guarantee you, guarantee you that the standard of, and I don't know this actually, but if I looked it up, I would bet my paycheck on it. That the standard of, of Hayes as it exists right now is not designed to handle those kind of trips. I mean, you can't even.
Yeah. And I think it's the same thing. I had the good fortune to serve at Vista Marietta High School when it opened. And I can remember at that day, the day before school start, started, sitting on the overpass with the mayor.
Yeah.
Asking what we're going to do to get kids across the, the freeway. We've been there.
Yeah.
And in fact, we're going to be meeting to talk about traffic here next week. Because that area has started once upon a time with two grades while you're in high school, um, with eleven hundred kiddos. And, um, and it was quiet every day. And now it's the center of town where it's the largest high school. It's probably the most popular populated area. And there again, and we made it through that over time. It's been over twenty years now, um, but we started small and we've grown up as a city together, uh, to be able to do this. And granted, I would much rather be not here talking about the response to the building that's happening in Marietta. But we have to do something. You see the data.
Sure.
The data doesn't lie. You see the things that you've approved and understanding. We recognize that things that happened to us are not something we wanted. But this is purely in response to what we need to do on the west side. And I hope, and I appreciate your commentary about other opportunities we could explore. But again, I want to reiterate, tonight, we don't have dollars, as, as Mr. Fisher said, we don't have dollars. It's probably not going to happen in the near future. But we needed to be able to grab land while we can for a future, for a future school. And this was the best available for the, not only the area, the size, as well as the boundary we're talking about. Because again, when you're talking about kids walking to school, there's not a whole lot of residential area. That is going to be walking down Jefferson, you know, first grader down Jefferson. And so, um, sometimes quiet places are maybe not appealing, but they can be safe.
Well, and I, and I want to get, I want to get to the data, you know, is soon. But, you know, I think in, and I appreciate the, you know, the story about, about Vista Marietta. And I too can remember, um, you know, when, when the overpass was built and things like that. That, that area provided tons of open space to, you know, to grow and to widen. And honestly, they probably should have widened, you know, um, Clinton Keith to Whitewood wider than it is now. It's getting choked down as it is now, especially with phase two and phase three of Clinton Keith being built. But, uh, my point is that, is that we don't have, there, there's not that option over here. You know, we, we are choked down to, you know, a two lane road coming down Ivy pretty much from Jefferson. I mean, you go about, you go past Gehoots and Brand X and you've got all these buildings and, and residential structures basically on the curb there. There's no room to expand there. Uh, I have a first grader who goes to Coal Canyon and, um, I see, you know, what a traffic disaster it is getting in and out and dropping them off, picking them up. My wife gets there like forty minutes early to pick them up. And, um, you know, that even has a capacity, I think, because it's got, it's got four different entrances and exits to get to that school. But people are cutting through the neighborhood and, you know, it's just not, it's not great. But what I'm saying is like, I don't see where we could expand the road to even, you know, have turning lanes or have, you know, um, uh, two lanes coming back out to get, you know, cars and pedestrians, people out of there. So, um, I'm having a really difficult time, like I said, wrapping my head around the traffic pattern with that. But let's move on to like the data. You, you can't, you had some slides, actually, if you wouldn't mind putting some of those slides back up. You know, I can understand that, you know, the state average size is small. I mean, we're talking, you know, the size of the state. And then obviously there's a bunch of rural areas that are considered in that that probably have fourteen, fifteen, twenty kids in the school that, that helped drive that number down. But my question is, um, I think it's, I think it's proven that birth rates have been down for like the last seven years, maybe minus COVID, but overall in America. How do they, how do these, um, consultants formulate this, this opinion or this data on how many children? Will be needing a seat in the class, you know, for an elementary school in Marietta?
That's a great question. Um, and I should have kept my slide about generation factors in there and I apologize for not doing that. But when we talk about student generation factor, birth rates are considered within the city. We recognize that, um, and like I said, an anecdotal story that, you know, being here for, you know, long with you. Once upon a time when we saw pri, home prices increase, we saw the number of secondary students outpace elementary school students. What I find completely fascinating right now in today's market and the cost of homes, we're seeing elementary families. Growing and living on the west side. That didn't happen once upon a time. And so as you think about generation factors, the generation factors, um, are provided annually by a demographer. They look at not only the generation factors of a single family home, um, a multi-family unit. They look at cohort survival rates of kids once they start in the, uh, in the school district that they continue in the school district. And so our, our data over the years as presented by our demographer has been, like I said, between like a two percent plus or minus with accuracy. There has been outlier, uh, data. Interestingly enough, this past year, Antelope Hills had about sixty kids last year. Show up that we, where we couldn't, like, where did they go from? We were looking at address data inside of Mitchell Place and some of the apartments there. And no, that's not it. But we couldn't understand where it was coming from, except for the potential of turnover when, uh, the home sells or rentals. But you see these anomalies that were not counted for. But sometimes we're within two or three kids at, in some of our, uh, our, our projections. And so, um, but again, we have, we outsourced that, um, out. And you can, when you look at slide, I don't know what slide it was, maybe slide. Three, if you can go back to slide three, there you go. You can see the, um, multi-family, uh, student growth rate as well, uh, and how those things are, um, factored. Per pursuant to the population at each school site. Again, I will go on record and share with you TK and K are hard ones. We don't know if a family member is going to put their young one in our schools immediately. It's half day program. Many of our families work and they need a full day experience. And while we have a full day option for some of our kiddos, we don't have that static, um, with in this classroom all day long. From six AM to six PM at night that some of our families do need. And so we recognize we're not the choice, um, for those TK and K families, um, but we're trying to be.
Yeah, no, just, just lived through that last year and living through it again with my second. So understood that it is, it is a challenge, kind of like gauging, you know, who is going to show up and who's not.
Michael, I appreciate your comments because again, I think that I'd like to be at home right now with my, my family. Knowing that we certainly have some challenges in front of us and we're looking for your input and we appreciate it.
Sure. And I don't, I don't think there's a person in this room that isn't, isn't proud to live where they live, isn't proud of our school district. We're, I think we're all super proud, you know? I've got more friends that have moved from out of town, more friends now that have moved from out of town, basically solely based on our school district. And I think that's a testament to the guy, the job that you guys do. You know, the, the pride that our teachers take in, in, in our public school. And I think it's great. You know, we're here tonight to talk about and give you guys some feedback on this particular location of a potential school site. That is, has no funding for right now and it's just an idea.
Yeah.
Speaking of funding, so where do you get the? Speaking of funding, so where do you get the funding, or excuse me, does the school district have funding to purchase the property?
Yes.
Okay, so you have funding for that, but obviously, you know, the 100 million to build a school is a little different.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Let me see here. You know, again, I have, I have no further comment other than, you know, I think there, I think there present some challenges and, you know, I would just encourage that if there's an opportunity for a school site, you know, somewhere, you know, still on the west side, we're still talking the west side of the freeway, still, you know, very close by. I mean, I looked at where the apartments are being built, the Max and, you know, the apartments coming in on Jefferson. There's a lot of land opened up over there that is even closer, as close or comparably close as this particular site. I think it kind of, I think it does kind of bridge a gap. You guys have an image, like an aerial of your, of the schools, like on a map, like on a map overlay. And, you know, this is obviously very close to Marietta Elementary. It's obviously very close to Thompson and MV. And I'm sure you've driven through here 100 times, thousands of times.
Every day.
You know, down Washington, coming into, you know, into Old Town, like it's packed, it's busy. To add another school that would potentially be on, you know, a similar, the same schedule as Marietta L or Thompson in this small area with all these tight, tiny roads. You know, again, I think it's just a challenge that, you know, if we could find a different spot, like, we, I think we'd be happy with that. So anyways, that's all the questions I have. Thank you for answering these and being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael, for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. La Paglia. For the folks here in the audience today, certainly appreciate everyone showing up and your passion for sure. There will be an opportunity for you to speak. So if you haven't filled out a public comment card there in the lobby, please do so. And just help us, help us stay, stay on track here where our agenda be much appreciated, okay? So gentlemen, thank you for the presentation. I want to compliment the city and the school districts for your ongoing collaboration and communication for future needs. It's great that we're working together. In the spirit of helping to educate the commission, the city council, and the residents that are here today and perhaps looking online, and I know this is taped, I do have a few questions if you folks can share the specifics on. Again, in the spirit of working together, right? Because the end of the day, we all want what's best for our kids, right? I think we're all coming from the same, the same point. We certainly have that, we're aligned on that. Did you notify, I know that the city didn't reach out to the residents. I know recently I've had a whole bunch of different communication here as we get into election season when you were trying to put a bond on the ballot that apparently I guess didn't make it. A whole bunch of communication on that. Did you also notify the residents in this particular area that you were looking to purchase a site? Were they notified at all of?
I know, I don't think so. Like I said, the purchase is not complete.
Okay, but hold on, please. Okay. Any reason why?
Why we didn't, said, we're pursuing this thing, it's not complete yet.
Okay.
There's a lot of things that has, it could happen to a school district in order for us to even build a school there.
Okay, and the reason I'm asking is because you were asking, you know, and putting this ballot measure together, if we paraphrase this topic this way, would you be intend, you know, inclined to vote yes if we paraphrase it that way? Kind of searching for feedback, but it doesn't look like that's happened yet with this particular project, correct?
Not with this particular property. There was a number of questionnaires that went out and which contained school, like, you know, a school, new school is part of that. But it wasn't, at that time, we were not in escrow. We didn't have, this wasn't, you know, we didn't have the availability. We met with the school board, I think it was in July.
Are you in escrow, are you, are you in escrow now?
Yes.
Okay, when, when is escrow set to close?
I don't have a final date on that. We're still going through due diligence process.
Okay. For the immediate homes in the area, do we know how many existing students in this area would benefit from this campus?
If you go back to the data, Craig, and you look at the number of students who are in Marietta L and Coal Canyon, the desire would be to change the boundary to pull students away from both of those schools. And it might be moving some students away from Coal to Marietta L and Marietta L to a new facility. And likewise with Thompson, that would be one option. Again, we would be working with the community on what that holds. I'm one person and I'm an accident and I'm not the school board who makes those final decisions.
Okay.
But like I said, those are concepts that we would have to look at because although the development that is here in town that's going, it's going to produce students, that's that unknown that we know. We know about the average of how many students are yielded from a multifamily complex. But when you say how many families now, the families now, we know we have two schools that have approximately 2,000 kids in them. And in the out years, we know we're not going to be able to accommodate 1,700 at Marietta L. And going back to Michael, I think we recognize we have to do something. It's where it's going to happen.
Okay, but we don't know in that immediate area, how many kids?
You're talking about in the bound, we don't have a boundary.
Got it.
A boundary hasn't been drawn.
But as far as from where that site is immediately around it for those homes?
No, we, we'd have to pull that data from a GIS mapping and it would give you averages of how many children are going to be there and what, whatever that boundary is going to look like.
Okay.
How far north is that boundary going to go and how far south that boundary would go?
Okay. During my, my work career, right, with companies like Coca-Cola, Kellogg's, you live and die with your forecast, right? Sales, labor, materials, production, the whole thing, right?
100%.
And one of the things that we would always do is we'd go back and, you know, how are we doing forecasting, right? What's that plus or minus look like? When it comes to the forecast that you were showing, how accurate have they been in the past?
Again, I said, we're within 2%.
Okay, so I moved into a new community in the southeast side back in 2016 and it closed in 2018. There was 111 homes in that neighborhood. And we were assessed a special Marietta School assessment for that neighborhood to help support the schools. So out of that 111 homes, approximately how many would you say have school age kids in it?
I'd have to do the quick math of that. But roughly if we're going to get, you know, four kids from a, are you talking all single family?
Yeah, all single family.
So four or five kids, or excuse me, what is it? Half a kid per house or whatever it is?
Okay. So just kind of walk in the neighborhood, right? Out of 111, there's 29 homes that have school age kids, approximately 26%. 22 of those homes have kids in the Marietta Valley Unified School District, which gives you about 75%, right? Of that 29 homes, seven have opted out and they're going to either Charter, homeschool, Lynnfield, Rancho Community, somewhere else, right? So the actual is like 20%. So you mentioned 6,900 units, right? So just kind of my monkey math with my fingers and toes up here. I'm getting, I'm getting about 1,400 students maybe. Do we need a new campus for 1,400 students if in fact that's even accurate?
So let's just go ahead and say, where are we going to put 500 kids right now?
With, with enrollment currently declining, correct?
If you look back at the slides, what the projection is at the elementary school and some in the middle school, we're increasing. We have a new grade level that's come, it's come online and it's being aged in. So we'll see growth there, but we're also seeing growth moving outward. Again, we have a school right now that doesn't have one classroom available.
Okay.
Coal Canyon. As I said, we have several with the new building that we just put in at Marietta L. On the west side, we do not have the facility to even house a couple hundred kids right now. And so I think that's the dilemma the school district is in.
Okay, so do you, would you anticipate this campus being served by busing? I see idling buses all through my neighborhood when I'm walking dogs and I'm like, no, I'm paying for that.
Comparative to the size of the school district, we, we have just over 21,000 students we serve. In comparison, our bus fleet is relatively small. We have board policy that talks about the distance a child lives away from the school to bus. But we have an obligation to bus to every one of our schools, our special needs students.
I know we talked general traffic and noise, impacts, sideways, sidewalks, parking. So again, I've been here since 2016, right? The only thing I've seen communication wise from the school board was, because I don't, my kids are all grown, right? They're out.
And I'm with you.
The only thing I see is, you know, hey, if I phrase this this way, would you vote yes for this bond, right? Some of the specifics and details you're sharing, I haven't heard. You know, what I hear is opportunities with communication with parents. I hear safety issues. I hear declining enrollment, right? Now that's what I hear. So I don't know how accurate those are. But I also know from some of the school board meetings, some of those topics get brought up. So that said, if this campus came through, would that be able to help you address some of the bleeding, you know, the seepage you have from existing parents moving on to somewhere else? Would that help you better effectively manage and lead the kids?
I, again, I'll respectfully ask, I'm sure we've lost kids over the years, you know, before COVID, after COVID. We know there's a finite space in a ranch, you said Rancho Christian?
Yeah.
You know, so how many students are at that school?
I have no idea.
And what's the capacity?
I have no idea.
And I don't either.
Yeah.
But we know that's a finite space for families who have the ability to transport their kid all the way out to Highway 79. Historically, I think the magic in this community has been able to be an answer for Marietta families. And we know what you guys have approved already on the west side is a response that we have to look for and we have to look for a solution together on how we're going to be able to meet the needs of the families.
Okay. And based on everything you looked at, well, if you're in escrow, then you, you feel this is the best site? Based on your due diligence, what you've looked at, that according to your needs and all your best estimates, this is what you need?
I think the last school we, we built was in 2000, we opened in 2009. It's been some time since we've been in a position where we needed to. We've been focusing from the central part of Marietta out east for so long. This is new to us. And again, I would give kudos to Carl and his staff for bringing a lot of this to our radar. Because historically, we didn't really need to examine what was happening on the west side. But we certainly recognize it's happening to us together. And our obligation as a school district is to make sure student housing is sufficient.
Got it. Collaboration's a beautiful thing.
It's a wonderful thing and I'm so thankful for having a partner.
Outstanding. Gentlemen, anything further?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Are you aware in this particular area that there's been a lot of discussion about the Marietta Creek and the flooding area in that area?
You know, we have heard some discussion, but I'm not familiar with all.
Might, might be to your advantage to understand that a little bit stronger because I've been hearing it for 10 years now. So the other thing is, I did a quick calculations and it looks like by 2030, you're going to have 15 new kids, 1,500, 1,511 new kiddos, as you call them.
Everybody, please hold comments. I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
And I was just wondering, 1,500 increase in kiddos, is that really necessary to build a new school?
Mr. Fisher, I'm going to have to ask how you're, can you expand on that math for me? So I fully understand.
Going from 9160 to 10411 in 2029, 2030?
Can I draw your eyes to Marietta Elementary School and where we sit today? And I want you to follow that line. And I shaded it in blue because again, I think we can probably handle, accommodate the students for 24, 25 and 25, 26. But 26, 27, it becomes, starts to becoming a problem at that particular school. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I meant, I understand. How long does it take for a school to be built? Let's say you get the money. Let's say that you're ready to go to build a school. How long does it take to actually build a school?
It's usually, it's usually about four years.
Four years from start to finish?
Start to finish. We go through the whole entire, you know, hiring an architect, reconstruction. We go through this whole sequa, then we got to design it, then about two and a half years of construction.
How long would you anticipate going through that process till you hit the ground to build the store, to build the school?
You're asking if, we don't have the money now to start, so.
Understand.
Yeah, we don't.
So by 2030, with an increase of 15 kiddos and no money right now, I would say probably you're looking out at least two years to get the money and to get all the planning and everything done and go through the state organization?
For funding alone would be at least two years.
At least two years.
Yeah, I would say two years minimum.
Okay. I'm very much in favor of education and I want children to be educated properly and to do it. I am, like my counterpart here, not really excited about this location. I don't think it offers the kiddos and I don't think it offers the families that live in that general area a decent living environment, so to speak, with this new school coming in. Anyhow, that's an opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. La Paglia?
Really no further questions. I just want to state that I don't, I don't disagree with the data at all. I mean, obviously you guys are professionals and you hire professionals to look at this. If you say that, you know, Marietta needs a new school, then yeah, I'm in on that. Marietta needs a new school. I think we're here tonight, obviously, to discuss the location of it. And, you know, I feel like we're kind of deviating from that from time to time. But, you know, hopefully tonight we can provide you with some public, you know, comment and some comment from the commission and this, this, obviously the staff will write a report and, you know, give, I guess, our discussion and our opinion of this particular location. But appreciate all that you guys do and thanks again for being here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the constructive comments. And we look forward to hearing the report from Carl.
Absolutely, Mr. Daniel Contreras. Thank you for being here and for, for sharing the information. Again, we're all on the same team. We're, we're just looking for what's best for everyone, so.
We appreciate that, ongoing partnership.
I know we'll be taking some public, thank you. I know we'll take some public comments next. Hopefully you folks can sit back and be able to listen to some of what our public has to say. Thank you. All right. At this point, we'd like to take public comments. For public comments, we're limiting speaker time to three minutes. Madam Secretary, if we can go with four, against and neutral in that order. And then folks here in the audience, right, obviously we got a full room, which is fantastic. We want to make sure each and everybody's heard and all valid issues, topics, thoughts are certainly brought out. So if you start hearing duplications, if you can, just please kind of rush right through that because I want to make sure everybody can get heard tonight. That make sense? Guys, good? Madam Secretary, do we have anyone for public comments?
Yes, we have Councilmember Lisa DeForest.
And if you come to the mic, if you would state your name, that would be much appreciated. Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening, good evening, planning commissioners. Nice to see you. It's odd from this side of the dais, but I do like it. And I thank you, thank you city staff for being here as well as Marietta Valley Unified School District as well. So, so the city of Marietta, especially the third district, is being pushed by Sacramento to accept multifamily housing and low income housing to the point of explosion. The school district has an obligation to look to the future and see the need for new schools. However, the district appears to want to add to the frustration of our community by trying to force a school into a location that is not at the best interest for the surrounding community or of our students. My husband and I moved to Marietta for the amazing schools and a safe community. I appreciate and support Marietta Unified to expand and serve this growing community of our children. But this location makes no sense. Our rural locations are fighting to stay rural and truly it is the last frontier of Marietta. The school district's desire to place this school in a location that does not take into account the issues of this community, the high fire danger, the lack of road infrastructure, the lack of curb and gutter sidewalk, the fact that it is truly a dead end road with only one way in and out. Let's break it down. Calmia, closed during any type of rainstorm, normally stays closed most of the winter. Calmia has flooding issues. All streets along Calmia are K-railled and backfilled with sand to prevent flooding of Line F, which is projected to cost the city over $8 million to improve. The Hayes Bridge, well, that's barely a bridge. It's very narrow and it's made of railroad ties and covered with asphalt. The bridge is failing. Flooding occurs at Ivy and Third Street when it's raining. Could you imagine children walking over there? And the city has to put up flooding signs immediately, even with a slight chance of rain. Incredibly narrow roads with no sidewalks, no place to park, along streets to pick up our kids, no circular flow of traffic. People will be parked all over the residential areas, U-turns at the beautiful Olive Ranch entrance, or what about U-turns at the cemetery? Pick me up at the cemetery, Mom. The district is not listening to our community, but in the near future, will desire this community to pass a bond for the school that we wholeheartedly reject at this proposed location. As your Third District Councilwoman, I have met several times with district representatives and have asked the city's Economic Development Director, as well as our Planning Director, to help find a more suitable location with better infrastructure. I understand the city cannot deny this school site. However, my community has spoken to me, and I hope the district reconsiders this decision in hope of maintaining a good community relationship. I wholeheartedly support Marietta Valley School District and will continue to be thankful for everything they have done in educating Marietta families. But my constituents have reached out, all in opposition of this project. Please look at other options. Please listen to our community. Thank you, Dr. Lisa DeForest, City Councilwoman, City of Marietta, District Three.
Three minutes goes fast. Thank you.
Eric Waller.
Good evening, Mr. Waller.
Good evening. My name's Eric Waller. I live at 42650 Cali Ortega, which is about a block or so south of the property in question. I've lived here more than 32 years. I know the area well. You've, I've heard many comments regarding the narrowness of the roads, the lack of sidewalks, the infrastructure necessary to widen the roads, to provide bike lanes, sidewalks, curb and gutter, streetlights. You're talking tens of millions of dollars for Hayes and Ivy both, and a long time to construct. Additionally, I don't think it's a safe location for the children. You're talking a half a block from Marietta Creek, which is an open ditch. And when it rains and fills up with water, that water sometimes runs for a few days after the rain. How are you going to keep those kids out of there? That's a problem, a big problem. So the traffic flow obviously would be a nightmare. And I just think that the school district saw 20 acres. They probably bought it at a bargain price because it wasn't zoned commercial, and they decided, let's try and put a school there. But it's just the wrong place. So thank you for listening to my comments.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Yeah.
If, again, if everyone could, everyone could hold applause, it'd be much appreciated.
Deborah Johnson.
Hello.
Welcome.
First of all, I want to say shame on you to the school district. You guys pulled a fast one on people, and you've already purchased a lot for $8.9 million. The guy bought it a year ago for $3 million.
Chair, if I could mention that when we have public speakers, they should speak directly to the Planning Commission and not orient their comments towards the school district.
Not notifying anybody was really a terrible thing to do, and they know exactly what they did. But I've lived in this community. My 41-year-old and my 37-year-old went for all the schools here. We moved over to the West Side because it was the last place to have the horses in the rule. You're talking approximately three miles by a half mile of rural old Marietta left. That's it. Three miles by a half mile. And this city was made on the thoroughbred ranches. And I was told years ago when I moved here, our first priority is to keep the horses in this city because our city was built on the thoroughbred ranches that came into this valley. And no matter what we do, we're pushed out. This is the third time in Marietta I will be pushed out of my house because how am I going to ride my horses? I ride down these streets all the time. People come out here because it's the only rural place left. We have people walking with kids and dogs. There's no sidewalks, and it's dangerous. My grandson went off this horse because someone ran up on his butt, and his horse flipped around, and his helmet broke in half. He'd have been dead on the streets. And we have signs that say, share the roads. And now you're going to put, how is the horse community going to stay? The equestrian center would be gone because kids won't be able to handle the dust, the flies. Oh, there's allergies. And you know, as soon as that school goes in, all of that will be gone. And it's like three miles by a half mile. That's all there is there. That's all. Why can't you leave it alone? Marietta was built on this community that is left. That's all I have to say. It gets old, having to fight for stuff, you know?
Thank you for coming out. Next, please.
Connie.
Welcome. Could you state your name, please? Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Connie McConnell. I usually stand up here and talk to the council. It's a little strange seeing the Planning Commission. But I wanted to say thank you to the Planning Commission for your questions regarding this. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate and agree with the things that you said. I agree with what Dr. DeForest said. And I also, I live close. I live on Calmia Street. I am a board member at the Cemetery District. I'm very familiar with all that area. I've lived in Marietta since 1952. So if you do the math, you know I'm old. But I love Marietta. I really don't think it's a safe area for a school with the two small streets. It is landlocked on the other side. There's really not enough access. And I live at the top of Calmia Street. I can tell you the number of times I've evacuated because of fire. Has anybody mentioned fire? No, it comes over those hills, and that's dangerous. And when the fire is coming, you leave. And if you had a whole bunch of kids there in a school with these small rural roads, it would be very hard to move them. Hayes is way too narrow. That wonderful bridge on the railroad ties isn't going to last much longer. And I'd love to see two school buses trying to go over that at the same time. They wouldn't make it. So I agree with what's been said in the past. I do oppose having this school there. I do not oppose schools, but I think it was wrong. We heard tonight, I heard two things. I heard, oh, we're not billing this school yet. We have nothing planned. And yet, they've already gone into escrow. They failed to mention that in the beginning. That's, that's very deceitful. Is, does the Planning Commission, my question to you is, does the Planning Commission have any say-so in changing or stopping this? It sounds like no matter what, the school district bought the property, they're bound and determined to put it there, even though there might be better places for it. And that's very disturbing to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Maria Winslow.
Welcome.
I'm Marta Winslow. My family moved to Marietta in 1976, something like that. We have Hools RV storage over by Marietta High School. And the thing about being close to the high school, there's a lot of different ways. We live down the street from the high school on Magnolia Street, which is Nighthawk Way. So we can come out and turn left and go over to Jefferson. So there are ways to kind of avoid some of the traffic. But where I live at Olive Hill Ranch, and a lot of these people here tonight do, we're down Ivy Street by, across from the cemetery. The only way we can get out is down Ivy Street. There's, there's no other way to get out. So if there's a lot of school traffic in there, we're literally going to be stuck. And if we needed emergency services, I don't know, they might not be able to get through. If, if there was a fire, it's going to be very hard for everybody to get out on that one street, Ivy Street. So it's kind of scary to think of being trapped in there. And we, you know, we moved there in a nice rural area, and so a lot of people would be pretty disappointed to have it become so busy and, and it's not very safe to have a school there. So that was my main concern. My understanding is the property is in escrow, so I don't think it's a done deal yet. It, it doesn't seem like they got a very good deal when it sold for, the people just bought it a couple of years ago for two or three million, and then the school bought it for eight. So that kind of makes you wonder if they over, overpaid for it. And I noticed when it, when the price went up, I saw it listed for sale, and they, how they got to that price, they priced it as though for city lots, and the property wasn't zoned for city lots. But that's how they got that high price on there, was saying that's what it would be worth for city lots, for smaller lots, not for the one-acre minimums that it's been for years and years. And where we live is one-acre minimums, and across the street is, I believe, two and a half acres. And a lot of that area over there is two and a half acres. So I also feel like there's not very many kids in the area, in the direct, immediate area. There's not very many kids. And our neighborhood's 23 years old. I've lived at Olive Hill for 23, maybe 24 years, 24 years. So a lot of the kids have grown up. There have been some new families go in. But I'm wondering, too, in all of Marietta, because most of our, our housing developments are 20 years old, right? To my knowledge, I mean, besides these new apartments. So seems like a lot of the kids would be growing up and phasing out of the school, and I just wonder.
Your time's up.
My time's up? Okay.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up?
Bill Rahar.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much for having it. Like everybody else mentioned, we didn't have a clue till yesterday. One of the neighbors found out about it, and we all circulate. You can see, we've got a pretty good group. Been a resident of Marietta for 34 years. Three of our children went to all the schools. And matter of fact, we were over in the Chevalier area, and they didn't even have a high school. So that's how far we go back. Kids had to go to Chevalier for high school. Since then, we have three high schools. So we really appreciate the school district, but this site is not good. Somebody mentioned, I think you didn't, about the residents in Olive Hill that have children. We have four houses out of 44 homes that have children that are in elementary school district or in elementary. There are so many things that they've mentioned about the fires. We've had numerous fires. That's the Santa Rosa Plateau. I was actually a fireman on that when it last burned. It's 40 years ago. So we are susceptible to fires and getting out, there's no way with all the traffic and everything else that we can safely move children out of that, that area and all the residents around it. So that's all I got to say. Everybody's been saying the same thing that we all are concerned with. This is a bad spot. This is supposed to be a question center. This was established for the question. You guys don't realize that. That was Old Reader Ranch, established in the 50s, all adobe houses, construction. And luckily, the city bought it, I don't know, 15, 18 years ago. We're all happy about that. But now I'm, we're all concerned about, you're going to give that, that's a little spot? What are you going to do next? Grab that equestrian center that has history behind it? This is, this was a great history of our, with our horses and everything else. So that's all I got to say. I'll save some other time for everybody else.
Thank you for your fire service. Next, please.
Rick Atkins.
Welcome. If you'd state your name when you come up.
I'm Rick Alkire. I live in Olive Hill Ranch as well. These are all my neighbors. I want to thank you for your comments very, very much because we live right down from you, where you grew up. I just want you to envision one thing. The egress and ingress of that school that you're proposing to be, or that site, is that small little 20 acres right there. We have one out. Imagine a fire breaking out on that hill, coming over that hill with the winds blowing like they blow up there at 2:00 in the afternoon. And we have to get out all those homes. Not only that, the estates down north or south of there, plus all the schools, all those kids, that will be a nightmare. I'm telling you, there will be catastrophic injuries. But I could go on and on about that, but I do not want that there. There's no way. I live alone up there, up on the top. I love it there. I've looked around and many, many other states to move. When I come home to that place, it's tranquil. It's, it's a beautiful place to live. And I do not want that destroyed from the schools. And I used to be an educator. I used to be a football coach, so I know what all that means, okay? And I'm for it, but not there. That's a bad location. It really is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Susie Dominguez.
Welcome.
Commissioners, thank you for being here. Before I, I'd like to preface my opposition.
If you could just stand a little closer to the mic. There you go.
I'd like to just say that a recent retiree from the MVUSD School District, as well as my husband, worked for City of Marietta for 30 years. So this is very, very passionate to both of us. My opposition mainly is public safety, as they were saying, the fire danger and for sure flooding. I've been in Marietta since 1980, and I lived on Second Avenue. And every time it rained, we'd have to gather our trash cans and gather our things because it would be down the riverbed. And yes, they lowered the streets, and the flooding has sort of eased, but definitely, definitely nowhere for children to walk along these streets. It would be thousands and millions of dollars. To widen the bridge, Calmia is closed. I know everybody has been saying it, all the different things. So I appreciate the time today, but I'm in complete 100% opposition of this project if it decides to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations on your retirement. Next, please.
Cassin Klein.
Welcome. Good evening. Like Lisa, who's my doctor, my chiropractor, and like Michael, my family owns a ranch on Hayes Avenue, just a little further south. They bought the land 41 years ago. Like Connie, I also serve as a trustee on the Cemetery District. And like the three of you, I served on the Planning Commission. I served on the planning commission from 2002 to 2005. The planning commission's responsibility is to consider facts and plan for the future. So if not this site, what site? And based on the data that we have... Mr. Fisher, you talked about traffic. What's the number one concern of all of our residents? Not just the west side, it's traffic. So what, in planning parlance, what is the cascade effect? Right? So if the students on the west side don't have schools to attend within that district, that means that parents, because we don't have busing, are going to be driving their kids in their cars to schools elsewhere on the east side. The cascade effect is not localized traffic here, it's traffic throughout the city. Those are facts we should be looking at, as objective and as planners. Michael, to your point about the Walmart piece and the piece on Jefferson, schools are sensitive receptors. Commercial development, industrial development are not permitted by SEQA to locate next to sensitive receptors. There are air quality, greenhouse gas. So that takes, for a myriad of other reasons, that takes those sites off the table. So while I agree with much of what is being said here, right? The subjective part, these are our homes. This is the history, all of these things. Moving forward with planning, how do we plan for our future that best serves the entire city? That's what we need to be focused on here. It needs to be a fact-finding mission. And if we don't want this site based on facts, we should be looking for alternatives to help the school district find an alternative site that better suits the city and satisfies all of us. Thank you.
Appreciate your viewpoints. Thank you.
...years old. They were anyone who's bottomed for the last 24 years. This is horse property. People, more than half the homes in there have views of the valley. They don't want to look at a school. We also, with this property that everyone's looking at, we have a creek on the right. But also in Olive Hill Ranch, we have blue water system. So we have four streets collecting V ditch water all through there. And it's going to run down to Lot 1, which is Olive Hill Ranch. And it goes right into the property that's being stated. So there would have to be some kind of infrastructure for that water. I haven't heard anything about that. For my quiet neighbors that live next to me, there's funerals. And there's cars up and down parked on Ivy Street to go to the cemetery. We also, in Olive Hill Ranch, have two gates. We're supposed to have three, but we only have two. So in case of fire or any kind of emergency, it's not a good situation. I'm also taught second grade, so I'm totally for education. I'm a mom who set my kids through Coal Canyon, Thompson, and now I have them at Mesa. All these schools, if you start at Thompson and you go down, it's one-way, and you feed into Washington, Calmia, and Jefferson. And when that happens, these parents drop their kids off. It gets backed up. Then they go down Washington, and then they turn down Calmia, which there's a charter school. Well, that charter school has not a loop system. So now you've got parents parked in the median and parked on both opposite directions, which has never been addressed. So there's always traffic there. And then if you go down a little bit further, there's Marietta Elementary. And if this new school went in, this school would feed into all those same streets at all the same time. So you can imagine how parents are going to get frustrated. And also, with the schools, they have two loops usually. Well, when you have those two loops, they go across traffic. Well, on Hayes, you couldn't do it there because there's the creek. And if you drive down Hayes where the creek is, there's like a bridge, but it narrows. So even a bus would have to go into the other lane to like whatever direction it's going to. So you've got bus issues, you have safety issues. The traffic, I know everybody's complaining about the traffic. It would be horrendous. We also have four brand-new apartments going in on Jefferson, which we don't even know what the impact of all that's going to be if this new school went in and everything else. Is my time up?
Yes, it is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Next, please.
Mary Thompson.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for your time. And I love that our planning commissioner and all of you are on the same side. I think we're not here to argue. My name again is Mary Thompson. I'm a resident of Olive Hill Ranch also, where many of our other speakers are from. So I think we all agree that we love this community. I know we moved here 34 years ago, raised our children also, Thompson Middle School, Marietta Valley. We used to live on the other side. And for 14 years, I lived and bought a brand-new house, not really knowing the whole setup, right across from Tovishaw Elementary. So we definitely know the impact and what happens with the school district, the traffic, everything going around, and, you know, people constantly racing down St. Raphael. That's why we moved over to the quiet west side. And that's what we love about it. And again, I know we're all in agreement that we want our kids to continue, and the education system here is fabulous. But I think there are other locations as well that we could maybe look into. Guava, there's some large parcels there. I don't know if anybody's looked. Actually, one of the real estate agents, I don't know if Linda's still here. Linda's here. She's got a beautiful parcel for sale with all of you that know where the camel was, right there on Guava and Adams, and right across from it. I mean, I think between the two, you could get about 20 acres right there. And the infrastructure is much better at Jefferson and Guava to accommodate the traffic with all these apartments coming up to that area as well. So I'm in agreement. I'm on the title and escrow side of the world. So I think there's a lot of other opportunities out here. And if we could somehow come together, like you were saying with the council and the school district, and maybe we could look together. There's people that have property that maybe would consider selling, especially, I wish I would have owned that property down the hill, had I known. But anyway, I just think the safety issues... I don't want to rehash everything that everybody else has already said. I know my time is almost up. But I agree, I just do not think it's safe there at all. There's such a much better location, I think, to satisfy another school coming into the area. So it would be great if we could work together and reconsider something. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming out, Julie. Next speaker, please.
Julie McHale.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Julie McHale. I live in Olive Hill Ranch, like these other neighbors here tonight. Most of what I was going to say has already been said. Appreciate a lot of your comments, Michael. But I did want to bring up something that Mr. Style had brought up earlier, that approval of a school site kind of depended on the code. And the code would include it needed to be near residents and the students it would serve. From what I've heard tonight, they're going to have to redraw boundaries to bring kids into this area. So it's not really serving this community where it's going to be built. So I think that would probably be a challenge to the code that we would look at later on. Also, is there adequate public access? That was another code that you brought up, that they had to show in order to purchase or build a school. And I think you've heard tonight, there really is not adequate public access to the site. They brought up there were three points of entry. There's only one point of entry, because along Hayes, you have a road that's constantly closed due to flooding. The other side of Hayes, you have a windy, narrow, two-lane highway. That's not really public access. So we have one way in and out. We have one point of public access. So I would argue that when it comes down to it and when it comes for approval, I would be coming and showing up and showing the code and saying this does not qualify, it does not meet the requirements. I also wanted to note that I am disappointed, as a taxpayer, that our school district would go ahead with such a significant purchase without getting more input from the residents and from our citizens here. And this is a huge purchase. I'm in real estate. I actually work for a home builder. I looked at this site two years ago. I couldn't justify a $2 million purchase price to develop homes on the site. I was shocked when it sold for $9 million. The price needs to be looked at. And if you were to talk to some agents in the area and said, hey, we have $9 million to spend on 20 acres, my guess, and I think this is another resident, you would probably have a lot of owners that are nearby with property that would sign up all day long for $10 million for their 20 acres. So I would encourage the school district to even ask for some pocket listings. Just put it out there, we're looking for 20 acres. We have $9 million to spend. And my guess is they will find parcels that are more adequately suited for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out. Next speaker, please.
Kristin Johnson.
Come on down, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for the time. I appreciate the comments and the opportunity to speak. My name is Kristin Johnson. My husband and I own a home in Olive Hill Ranch. And a lot of what's been said, I will not repeat. But there are a few things I do want to discuss. Behind the Joshua Tree residence is a Blue Line stream. You cannot touch it. You cannot do anything on that property because it's water runoff, not only from our properties, but from the hills when we get a bunch of rain. It goes right along the north side of the proposed property. And Army Corps of Engineers needs to be involved to look at that, which is the creek that you've heard that goes underneath Hayes, which is very narrow. So there is quite a bit of flooding when we get a huge winter rain. You can come back to my house. I'll show you the debris path where it looks like a river, even when it's dry. The Equestrian Center, the police do canine training there. Dogs, microphones yelling to do their training. I have a concern with the closeness. I don't want the Equestrian Center to go away, or the police department not to have a place to train. I'm concerned, how many students are coming from outside areas like Wildemar and Winchester and those kinds of areas into our school system? And do we need to look at that for future growth? We have bike races in that area more than once a year, tour-de-force kind of bike races, high speed. The streets are shut down. And as my fellow neighbors have said, we are in and out of that property one way. We can't go up towards the hills and get out. We can only go down Ivy. The last thing I did want to say is the school system, and I am pro-education. I'm a retired chief nursing officer in the area. My kids have gone to school, high school, college. I am very pro-education. School system sent out a beautiful brochure, talked about each school, which one was impacted. The roofs needed to be repaired. They needed to replace the portables. The way it was presented was that they needed to build on their property and expand. I would support a bond for fixing our schools, expanding our schools. I absolutely would not support or vote for a bond for a school in this location. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you for coming out. Next speaker, please.
William Kendrick.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah, good evening, William Kendrick. I live about a half-mile south of Ivy on Hayes Avenue. Everything's pretty much been said that I was thinking of. But I just wanted to bring up the fact that it looks like one of the largest developments is going to be the vineyard on the west side there. Seems like that would be possibly a good location for our school. I don't know how it falls into the zoning or the district lines that they draw up. But yeah, I'm not in favor of the current location that they're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Next speaker, please.
Lilly Bronwalder.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you. I'll be short. My concern is in the form of a legal question. And that is, will building this school in this location cause harm to anyone? And the answer, the legal answer, is yes. Also wanted to state that highly, very highly inappropriate for the school district not to give announcement to the residents. That's illegal. And one of the speakers was correct in saying that escrow, it's still an escrow. That means that it has not finished. So the deal is not a done deal. And if we continue on this path, I guarantee you, there's going to be plenty more city meetings with this topic, and a lot more people than this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Next speaker, please.
Wayne Phillips.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Phelps. And I've lived in Marietta since 1988. And I have to say that I have five children, and all of them went to Marietta Valley or below. And it's been great having my kids be able to go to school here. It's been a great community. We moved to the west side, right on Trilogy Trails. That's right off of Ivy. It's right across the street from the parcel. And I believe that out of the four homes that are on that street, not one of them has a child that would even attend this school. I'm really concerned about what everybody else has said. I feel like it's a really important thing to listen to the community. My fellow neighbors back here, I know that they're pretty anxious. I'm pretty anxious about what's going on. And I feel like this would be a travesty for our community to put this in this area. I feel like there's a number of different places that we could help facilitate, make sure that we can make this work. And I feel like we want to support the school district if it's the right thing to do. And as I do the math, I'm not a mathematician by any means, but as I do the math, I see that we could probably make things work in other ways. And I think that we need to kind of look at that before we keep going forward. I know that you all can only make the decision tonight to either agree or disagree, whatever it is. But I think as a community, we kind of have to look at this and say, we do want schools, but we just want them in the right places. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the seriousness that you're taking this. I feel like the whole community is behind you. And, you know, again, I've been in this area since 1988, had a great career here. And it's just a fabulous place to live. And I want to see that it's continued that way. Had one more thing to say, too, is I walk the streets from Ivy to Calmia every day. Every day I walk those streets. That's just what I do, trying to recover from just getting over cancer. And I'm just, you know, those are some of my favorite things to walk in this rural community. One of the things that I've seen is that cars do go quite quick down those streets. And to change that will be challenging for everybody. And I think that even some of the big trucks going around that corner, they can't make it. And so I see this with my eyes every morning. And I also see that once in a while, when somebody has a funeral, that the traffic gets backed up quite a bit coming up that street, because it's the only street, really, that people can go up to the cemetery. And as they go up there, I think, is that really the right place? I mean, right place for a school? You know, having people, you know... I get it, that, you know, we have to have the cemetery, and we have to have schools. But is it the right place to kind of like co-mix those two together? And I have to say, you know, I'm kind of against it. So I thank you for your time again, and I appreciate all that you do.
You stay and be well, sir. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Carol Haskins.
Good evening and welcome.
My name is Carol Haskin. I've lived here in Marietta for 42 years, and I live like a half a mile on Hayes Avenue south of the proposed. And I just want to say, thank you for hearing me. And everybody has said all the things that I would like to say, and I'm in agreement, and I oppose the site. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Next speaker, please.
Danny Chavez.
Welcome and good evening.
Thank you. My name is Danny Chavez, and I live at 42445 Ivy Street, which is the second house from the corner on Ivy and Hayes. So I spent a lot of time in my beautiful home there, and we've sent our kids through Marietta schools, you know, and passed that to universities and stuff. And we appreciate the Marietta Valley School District. They've done an excellent job. Lot of people, like Michael says earlier, that people, friends of ours have come here to get their kids educated in our system because it's so well-rated. But I'm just, it's a bad site. I've watched that site. I've lived at that property for 24 years now, and I've seen things. I've seen big custom homes come in, the two and a half acre sites, the house that this gentleman just described on his street. And, you know, it's just, it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit. The funeral, the cemetery is right there, which I'm going to move to after I move out of my house. I'm moving to that cemetery, you know? So I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear bells and, you know, public announcements, you know? I do not want to hear that. And another thing, you know, what people, some of the people have said mostly everything that I had to say, but the other thing is, is that I've lived there 24 years, and we always have our gate down the street open, and we've had two trick-or-treaters in 24 years. Okay? And they were actually older teenagers. They weren't, they weren't K through eight kids. So thanks for listening. I just, I'm just totally in disagreement with the, with that spot. I think that they should be able to find a better spot.
Begs the question, who's eating all the candy, right?
Yeah. Right here.
I appreciate you being here and your outlook. Thank you so much.
Let's hope you're not moving soon.
Yeah. Next speaker, please.
Anne Marie Berry.
Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Anne Marie Berry, and I won't repeat anything that was said already. But there are a few things about student population I want to bring up. With the boundaries, if the boundaries are changed, then will some children have to be going farther away from where they're already situated near the schools? That's one thing. And then the other one is those apartments they're building. I can't really see young families wanting to move in with no playground or a place for kids to play in those apartments. And big families, it doesn't seem like there'll be a big population of children there. And then the other thing was, someone mentioned about schools not being near stores and shopping centers. But this Marietta now has a Costco and a Home Depot nearby, right across the street. So I was wondering about how that happened. So that's it. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Next speaker, please.
John Vandenberg.
Welcome, sir.
I'm John Vandenberg, resident for 52 years out here in Old Town Marietta, and I consider it Old Town still. Want to publicly acknowledge Darren Daniel and his work that he's done in the district for our kids in this city for the last 22 years. He is an outstanding educator, right? He's a great leader of our district. But Darren, I'm Old Town, all right? It's a bad place, okay? I think Michael nailed it on the head. When you get off the 15 and you take a right, all right, and you go down Calumia, you guys have done a great job of creating the ecosystem with the theater, with the small old town, okay? I've noticed, and we've embraced the growth. At first, it was kind of like, oh, man, this growth sucks, okay? But you embrace the growth. We live on the far side of Hayes, off Calumia and Hayes on the dirt road back there, okay? Been there for 40 something years. And as you guys have grown our little old town, we've kind of embraced that growth. But I've noticed after school that families are coming over to the west side now to ride their bikes, to walk over there, Michael. You know, they've done the two-hour, three-hour commute back from San Diego. They're stressed. They load up the family and say, hey, let's go decompress. You guys have given us a theater down there. You've given us little restaurants down there. We still got Joni's, okay? And Darren would be the first one to join me down there for a beer at Joni's. I know he would, okay? But this site gives us something that we have never experienced. And Darren, we don't have traffic over there, all right? The traffic are the kids walking on the dirt, not the sidewalk. The traffic are the kids riding their bikes. We got to get Calumia fixed, you guys, all right? We got to get Calumia fixed. That, the kids are being pulled into the middle of the road on their bikes, okay? We got to get a stop sign at B Street, all right, on Calumia and B Street, because kids are flying down that road right there. So there's a lot of infrastructure over there that we don't have, that cannot support this school, okay? And when I think about it, Michael, when we talk about, you know, what you guys have built, you know, I pull off, and I still see Marietta when we moved out here in '72, okay? There's something special about Marietta down that side that no other city in Southern California has. We can continue to embrace that slow lifestyle, meet down at the little restaurants for a little cocktail and a glass of wine, hop on our bikes and ride through. I ride the bikes, so I don't have to pedal, okay? And take the side roads, okay? Put that school over on Guava. Put that school over on Jefferson. Put it up on Clinton Keith, okay? And I asked, I asked you to ask the district, all right? How many kids at Coal Canyon are inter-district transfers? How many kids at Thompson Middle School are inter-district transfers? How many kids are coming into our district right now from other cities moving or coming in on inter-district transfers? We've got to ask those questions. We might be able to deplete some of the population in their classrooms by just saying, hey, we've got to slow down because we've got our own growth going on in our own cities. We do have the best school districts in Riverside, and that's because of Darren's leadership. But Darren, it's a bad spot.
I appreciate you coming out. Thank you. Everybody hold your applause. Next speaker, please.
Samuel Lockhart.
Welcome, sir.
Samuel Lockhart. I live just up on Edna Road. So I heard you guys say, thank you for the partnership. I don't see any partnership. And really, it's just dishonest to everybody here. Everyone should be upset. They shouldn't be kind at all. This is perfunctory. You can do nothing. They have purchased a site. They didn't let anybody know here. You know that, right? You know that you have nothing to say to anything that's been going on here. These people are coming up here as though you can do something. You can do nothing but give lip service, right? Am I right? Am I right? I'm right. And so only thing you can do is simply say, oh, yeah, that's great. Yeah, the roads, whatever. But you, this is, there's no partnership. They're an escrow. When they buy the lot, what happens? Nothing. You're going to approve it. You have no more involvement at all whatsoever. They're paying $9 million for a lot. Once they buy that lot, it's $9 million bucks. Who's going to buy it? If they can't build a, build a school, then who's going to buy that privately? Nope. Then they'll have a $9 million lot, then they'll come in and say, we need a bond, right? When they say we need a bond, then they'll say, what about the children? We need this bond. Can you give us some language so we can get this money? So we can get 50, $100 million because of the children? And then guess who's paying for all of the street improvements that we're all talking about? We're going to pay for it, right? Everyone here has complained about that bridge, and they're complaining about Calumia. But guess who will pay for it when the, when the school goes in? We will. Miraculously, what we can't get done now with no school, we will pay for through a bond, and then we will pay for all those street improvements again, right? It'll come out of our pockets. There's no partnership here. You should not be saying, thank you. Thank you, Marietta Valley, for your partnership. There's no partnership. They should have talked to you beforehand. They should have provided notice. This is the only opportunity that the public had to come in here and say, this is stupid. It's a stupid idea. And they'd get no one noticed. Thankfully, Lisa let me know. Thankfully, notice was provided, so people should come through. They should not be nice. People should be pissed off in this room and saying, it's ridiculous.
Okay? Everybody would hold on there.
And they should applaud. They should applaud. And you should be, and you should be doing everything in your power to let Marietta Valley know that what they've done is dishonest, that they gave no one an opportunity to get up here and say that this is ridiculous, and then try and guilt the community in to paying for a school that no one wants, that's in a terrible spot, that they are overpaying for. Why are they paying $9 million? Again, they will not be able to offload this property. So they're saying, oh, we don't have plans yet. But guess what? Once they get it, you're out of the picture. They deal with the state, and they're going to guilt everyone into paying this huge bond to build a school where it should not be. And we should all be aghast, and we should all work to make sure everyone knows what they did and how they tried to make sure that we had no voice in what they tried to pull on us tonight. Thank you.
Everybody hold on there, would you? Hey, folks, I just, I just need your help. We do have policy and procedures and things we have to follow through on this. And sir, I appreciate your passion. And just for everybody's awareness, right? So we're not able to comment on public comments. We will when we're done, as we collaborate and get with, get with staff, but we're unable to comment on comments that were made, okay? So that being said, appreciate everybody holding the applause and/or boos, et cetera, as we try and work through all this tonight, okay? Next speaker, please.
Samantha Rose.
Welcome.
Well, I want to say thank you for listening to all of us and truly thinking about what is best for our community as we continue to grow. I really appreciate, Michael, your comments, too, just so you know. My name is Dr. Samantha Rose. Sorry. My name is Dr. Samantha Rose, and I'm a veterinarian for the community. I rescheduled my patients that I had scheduled for this evening with less than 24 hours' notice so I could be here. I have owned 42808 Joshua Tree Court for almost six years with my family. It's a beautiful community with 44 houses. You could actually see it on the map. It is the widest spanned house that is going to be greatly affected directly with the view of the new proposed school. So we currently have four families with school-aged children, and I am one of them. Forty-four houses directly behind this proposed school. We purchased our house because of the land and it being an equestrian community with the equestrian farm. The community has houses that are one to two acres. It's truly beautiful to see the horses walking in the street with their owners taking in their calm surroundings. My concern is that there is only one entrance to our neighborhood on Ivy Street, and that would prevent us from other options to go around the school zone. Being a mother of two children, I've experienced school zones in the Marietta School District, and I can tell you that I avoid them as much as possible when picking up my children. I will have them meet me at a location farther away from the school due to the amount of traffic and hostile environments they can be. My child attended Coal Canyon for three years, and there needed to be a police officer there multiple days a week in order to facilitate the traffic and prevent other parents from engaging in behavior that was not acceptable. The building of the school would directly impact my house and my family due to the location since we are directly in front of the property. My lot spans two acres wide, so my entire backyard would be exposed to the school, allowing for no privacy for my family and myself. Our house is slightly elevated from the lot behind, and it has an unobstructed view of my backyard. So when my family and I are out there, we would be exposed, including when we are outside in our pool in our bathing suits. I honestly would no longer enjoy the house that is my sanctuary when I'm not working. I understand the growth of our city, and I'm in favor of a new school, but this isn't the correct location to build. And I agree, we should come together and find a better location that is more favorable and can support a school. Thank you so much for listening to me, but it is greatly going to affect that Olive Hill community tremendously.
Thank you for, thank you for coming out. I know you made some accommodations to be here. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Brian, I can't read the last one.
Welcome, sir.
Thanks. Good evening. I'm Brian Tankledge, and I'm the newest homeowner in Olive Hill Ranch. I'm Samantha's neighbor. I haven't even been there for six months. I can't believe I'm standing here before you. This is unbelievable. There is rules. Let's just talk about the general plan for a bit. When we were buying our home, I looked at the general plan. I knew that someday there would be homes on that lot that I would be looking at. I would never envision that there would be a school there. This is ridiculous. It would absolutely, or schools, it would absolutely destroy not only Olive Hill Ranch, but everything on that side of the Wash. You guys have a weighty responsibility with making these decisions. There are better sites. There are silly rules in Sacramento for where you can't locate a school because, oh, it can't be close to a Walmart because, you know, trucks pull up to the loading docks. That's just stupid. We all breathe the same air, okay? We got to get over these little things. We keep making changes to general plans that are, that are well-designed, been there for decades. There's so many people that have spoken tonight that have lived here 30, 40, 50-plus years, and I'm the newbie on the block. And I am absolutely appalled that, I found out about this yesterday, 27 hours ago, okay? I couldn't change any of my plans. I walked in here an hour late. I did everything I could to get here on time, but this notice, I mean, where are the notices? There was nothing mailed to our house. There's no sign on the property. This, this is a joke. There's no description of the lot in here. There's no APN number. There's no, hey, it's on the southwest corner, okay? It just talks about a lot at Hayes and Ivy. Well, go kitty quarter, there's a vacant lot over there, too. What lot are we talking about? I think the public, the community needs to be well-advised of this beforehand. So this is a pretty good turnout, but I think it would be even bigger if proper notice went out, and I'm disgusted about that. Shame on you. I don't know you, but we should get to know each other. I have done development in the past. I could maybe be helpful in selecting a site and helping you. So I would like to work with the school district, with the city, with all my neighbors, and I love this community. I've only been here five months, and we're really looking forward to settling down here and being here for the next couple of decades. But if we, if this state keeps making asinine changes, okay, it's going to drive everybody out of here. This place is going to go in the toilet. So thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming out. Everybody hold on.
Bill Crames.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I guess I concluded, I was one of those old grouchy retired people living up in the area, and now I see a lot of these young people here, so I'm encouraged. And I do, about the cemetery, so when he left...
If, if, if you get a...
I'll give you a high five.
If you could address the commission, thank you.
I'm sorry. My name is Bill Cramas, and I live on Estate Hills Way. And I was kind of surprised, too, that we didn't get any notification. I had a friend of mine call me, text me about two hours ago and said, there's a meeting tonight on, and then they're going to be discussing the purchase of the property at Ivy and Hayes for the new school that's going to be built there. I was a bit taken aback. One of the things that I remember, I had the privilege of chair, of chairing the Westside Advisory Board and looking at development of the area, and that was about 15 years ago. And one of the things, it was, it was a public hearing. And one of the things that came through loud and clear in those days, it was probably about 20 years ago, was what can we do to preserve this pristine area? It's the last pristine area in Marietta. I think at the time, we designated it as rural equestrian, and there were a lot of horse people in those days that wanted to preserve the area. One of the things that's concerned me, sitting here listening to this, is we can't get fire insurance in our area. We can't get it. We have to go through the state to get it, through the fair plan. Nobody will write fire insurance, and so we're, we're really at a loss up there. That in itself would be a potential liability for a school district there. One of the things that, my... My property abuts the cemetery, and one of the things I've noticed over the years is there's anywhere from three to five funerals there at Laurel Cemetery on a monthly basis, and there's tremendous traffic as a result of that. And I would shudder to think of what would happen if school was getting out at the same time there was a procession coming out of the cemetery. So anyway, what's been said, I appreciate Michael's comments. I want to reaffirm my support of that, and it does seem like a strange place to build a school, and the cost in providing the egress to that would be phenomenal. And I agree with him. I think we'd be facing a big bond, which we all vote against. Thank you.
Sir, thank you for coming out tonight. Madam Secretary, anymore?
No other speakers.
Okay, that concludes our public comments. Folks, quite often commissioners will sit up here and we look out, and a lot of these seats are empty. And it's really nice to see everyone out here tonight. I appreciate your being here. I know a lot of schedules got changed, your passion, a lot of passion and emotion for this project certainly, right? And at the end of the day, though, all we want is what's best for the kids, what's best for our city, what's best for our homes. We had our city council person come out here as well today, so it's just awesome to see everybody out here, and we want to thank you guys again for coming out. So this, commissioners, this is not a project, right? So thus, no vote or recommendation to pass on to city councils, we normally would. So at this point, we're looking to put recommendations, talk amongst one another, recommendations for staff to put to the school districts concerning the potential acquisition of this property, correct?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Yeah, from city staff's perspective, to bring this back, there's... Appreciate all the public comments. All we really have authority under is Public Resources Code 21151.2, that the planning commission investigate the property, provide recommendations to staff, and staff would forward those recommendations to the district. Everything we heard tonight is public record. It's in our record already, and we can summarize that. But if the commission has particular comments that they'd like to discuss or provide direction to staff, we're happy to receive that. Jared Ramaya and I are both here tonight. We can put that into our letter.
So how about if each commissioner makes some particular statements and recommendations, starting with Mr. Fisher?
I have a lot of empathy for the public comments and appreciate the ability to voice their opinions tonight. The due process of the law allows for that, and I am very happy that it does because people are very passionate about where they live and the area surrounding where they live. However, I want to give the school district a scolding on the fact of the disappointment I personally have of not knowing anything about this and it being an escrow before this public hearing. I just don't understand that at all. And so I'm just very disappointed on that now. On the other side of it, what are the alternatives? Look at the possibility of not getting 50 acres. How about so many acres for an elementary school and so many acres for a middle school? How about that? And are there different sites that would accommodate the two different sites, so to speak, for the elementary side of it and for the middle school side of it? That's what I would suggest that we look at as a possible alternative, because there is property out here. There may not be 20 acres, but can 10 acres someplace and another 10 acres someplace constructively help us to get the school board what they need for the increase in enrollment that's forthcoming? I don't know, but my recommendation would be to look at not 20 acres, but look at a smaller amount of acreage for each of those facilities. And I don't know if it's an equal or if it's 5 acres or 10 acres for one, 15 acres for the other. I don't know. But that would be my alternative thought process for the school district. Again, I'm very disappointed in the fact that I'm just learning about this tonight at this hearing along with our constituents up here in the area that that is proposed to be. I also am a little bit upset about the fact we have no money to build a school, but we can spend $9 million to buy a property? That's... I'm just... I'm really, really opposed to this project.
Mr. Fisher, I appreciate your passion. Mr. Lepaglia? Everybody hold the applause, please.
Boy, what an evening. So, you know, and I'm not going to get into the weeds of, you know, the he said, she said stuff, but, you know, tonight was a discussion. There's not a project. There's not, you know, a school being built. Tonight was like an open public session, excuse me, open discussion. I view this as your opportunity to come voice your opinions, and you guys did, and it was great. You know, whatever the fact was with the notification, you know, the city or the school district or someone could have done a better job, you know, is what it is, but I'm very appreciative that everybody showed up, that everybody gave, obviously, their opposition and, you know, made some really, really critical points. I think everybody that spoke tonight all spoke about safety and safety of the children and safety of kids and access and things like that. And our job tonight, I believe, is to give staff, you know, kind of like a summarized feedback of what we heard tonight. Obviously, everything's on public record that everybody spoke about, and, you know, that's in stone. But what I heard back to staff, I guess, is, you know, there's some concerns about the flooding and, you know, the lack of infrastructure for the stormwater discharge. You know, the gentleman that made the comment about the creek flooding, you know, I didn't think about that. That's a pretty serious thing. I can't imagine kids walking home and, you know, being curious and wandering down towards the creek when it is, you know, moving at 20 miles an hour, and I didn't think about that. And that's the point of you guys being here, is to bring your opinion from your view and bring it to, you know, the folks at the school district and our staff to give your opinion about that. I think you guys did a great job. But that is something that staff should consider. You know, someone talked about the Equestrian Center and the likeliness of maybe that going away because of the, you know, the flies and the odor and stuff like that. And, you know, I think that's a great public amenity, although it needs some work. It's a great public amenity for us to have, and, you know, I would hate for that to be in jeopardy for, you know, the folks of this side of town to lose. Someone talked about the wind, and I kind of forget where we went with that. I didn't write it down fast enough, but I was thinking how difficult it would be to play sports with that wind that comes over that mountain because it is pretty furious most days of the year, most afternoons. Can't imagine playing baseball or throwing a football or, you know, anything like that in that. So, you know, these are all points and topics that the public gave to us tonight to report back to you guys, to, you know, develop your report and send to the school district and say, you know, the pros are, you know, we need a school and we believe that, you know, we want to support our school district in every way possible, but, you know, the cons might overweight that for this particular location. I'm happy to hear that they're just an escrow, that it has not closed escrow. There's a huge difference there, you know, and it sounds like they are an escrow and have not closed. To staff, again, I think a couple other critical points were the cemetery parking and traffic. I don't know how often people are moving there, but it sounds like, you know, it does happen, you know, pretty frequently, and that traffic does back up. I can actually remember that, you know, it does park all along, you know, Ivy Street, I guess depending on how popular that person was or not, but, you know, that could be a huge impact. I can't imagine, again, taking my children, taking my son to school over at Coal Canyon, dealing with the traffic that's there, and then on top of that, having to deal with, you know, a funeral service or something like that and the parking and everything going on like that, especially a clash of emotions there. That could, you know, that could definitely go bad. But another good point that someone brought up, let's see here, you know, Calmia flooding, again, something, you know, that I personally overlooked. Calmia floods, and, I mean, gosh, it seems like four months out of the year, they do put up K-Rail and sandbags, and, you know, it basically closes down access to that road. That's, again, just going to push more people, you know, dropping their children off into the streets. So, you know, I think we heard a lot of good points, you know, about why this particular property is maybe not the best fit for a school. You know, like others said, too, it's, you know, maybe not, it's not our job to find a different property for them, but hopefully this report from you guys will encourage them to find, you know, an alternative location that would fit better. So with that being said, I think that's all I have. I thank everybody for coming out and giving your, you know, your three minutes tonight, and thanks again to staff for putting this together, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lepaglia. So a couple things, I took some notes up here. So just looking at some red flags, right? The money shortfall, right? So if you have the property, where's the money going to come to build a school? The pricing and the appraisal, boy, that's a red flag. I think that's something that, I think we need to be good stewards of our tax dollars, and I think that's something that should be explored and looked at. Traffic, busing, safety, I think that was certainly covered quite a bit. I still question the forecast accuracy. I know what my neighborhood of 111 homes is tasked with, and I know what the actuals are, and I'm not so sure with 6,900 units that we need 20 acres of schooling. I think that's something that should be looked at and twisted and turned, potentially redistrict, redistrict existing facilities and looking at it. Because, again, from what I'm told, I saw some numbers, but what I'm told is enrollments declining. Concerns with fire, that's got to be number one, right, coming over that hill. We didn't talk police. That never came up, right? So what's that look like? Because I know if you attend school board meetings, you hear safety concerns, right? So what's that look like? And really, meeting the needs of the existing students, the people in that immediate neighborhood. It doesn't sound like there's any homes or kids there that this thing's going to immediately serve. It sounds like it's all going to be coming from outside, and we didn't see any data on that piece there. There's a Bob Dylan song called "He Got to Serve Somebody." It's one of my favorite songs, okay? And if you've attended any of these or if you've listened to some of the things that I espouse at times, it's, you got to serve the taxpayers, right? So I applaud staff and districts and the collaborations and the things you're doing together, right? But at the end of the day, it's about the taxpayers, right? Because we're the ones that are funding this, and these are the ones that really have to be served. So I echo Mr. Fisher's comments. I'm very concerned. In fact, I could probably use a stronger word, but I'm going to stick with concerned over the lack of communication to the public and the intent in this thing being an escrow already, right? I mean, of course, I was out of the barn when I heard that, right? And it was kind of, it's like, what can we do, right? Oh, it's already an escrow. How do you plan? How does a planning commission plan when the property's already purchased, right? I mean, we're handed the cake. We had no say-so in the ingredients, right? So I guess that's one of the concerns that I'd like to share on that as well. I think the, again, I've been a resident since 2016, and I haven't seen anything from the school district as far as communication except for, hey, how does this sound so I can get more money from you? I think it was... If you can hear that little noise? It's opportunity knocking to engage the fine people that were in this room today because the passion is there, not only here but throughout the whole city, to bring them all on board because we all want the same thing. Let's do it the right way. I think this feels like some pieces were missed. That's all I have.
Okay. Does that round out the commission's comments for staff, and we can incorporate that into our report to the district?
Well, I think staff has to look at, because if a school is needed, we have to come up with a help with the school district as to other alternatives. And I'm thinking maybe 20 acres in one place isn't the way to go, that we can look and divide that between the middle school and the elementary schools. So I would ask the staff to possibly help the school district look at that possibility if there's land available out there before the escrow closes.
Anything further, Mr. Lepaglia? Anything further, Carl?
I'd say, so just...
Do you guys have what you need from us?
Yeah, I think we have what we need. Staff isn't real estate agents. There's a lot of them in the room. But we are happy to help the school district with the capacity that the Development Services Department has related to this question, and we'll do our best. And with that, I think we've received all the commission's input that we've tonight, so appreciate it, and that would round out this item unless there's anything else.
Gentlemen, good? All right. So I feel like we're in extra innings here rounding third, huh? All right. So as baseball season wraps up, we'll round third, head for home. Mr. Carl Steele, city planner comments?
Okay, so moving on to the next section of the agenda, past this item. Yeah, city planner comments. I don't anticipate a meeting in two weeks. I don't think there's anything for the next meeting, so probably the next meeting will be later in October. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. This is exciting to have this many people for planning commissions. Would love to have you come for more planning commissions. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Steele, thank you. Mr. Ramaya, anything on your end?
No, but to echo tonight, I do want to thank our citizens. That's how the school district got to where it's at, and we received a lot of great input. We're going to type that up and put that into a letter. Really want to underscore tonight's presentations and communication. That has been very helpful for staff.
Outstanding. If everybody in the crowd can just kind of hold on a second, we're wrapping up. Mr. Early, any comments from the attorney?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Gentlemen, any further comments up here? All right. Folks, again, thank you all for coming out, and if there's no further business, may I ask for consensus to adjourn the meeting at 8:31?
Agree.
All right. Mission... Meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.